Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of December 5th, 2017. First item is a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No one else?
Sure.
Before we get started here tonight, for those that don't know, pretty much everybody does know, but the day, the weekend of Thanksgiving, that Sunday, we lost Lorraine Yetton. She was a fixture here in the Town Hall, worked here many, many, many years.
Over thirty.
Yeah, yeah, with, she was, was she a selectman at one point or husband was?
Yes.
Yeah, so she held many positions here, gonna be greatly missed. There's going to be a celebration of life, December 9th, at 1:00 PM, up here at the church, you know, with, you know, to celebrate her, celebrate her life and accomplishments, and afterwards at the church also, there's gonna be refreshments and stories and whatnot.
At the hall here.
Oh, at the hall here, okay.
Refreshments are here immediately after.
Church up there, at 1:00, and then down here at the hall for refreshments, so, but she's gonna be greatly missed, she's a great lady.
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor? I'd like to see a motion to approve the minutes of November 21st, and I'd like to table the 14th, I didn't get a chance to read them.
Okay, I'll make a motion where we table the 14th, November 14th minutes, and we approve November 21st minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Department head committee chair updates, we have the Marijuana Committee.
Good evening, thank you, my name's Richard Nass. Relative to the Marijuana Committee, I'd just first like to thank the people who showed up to vote on the 28th for the moratorium, which was passed, not by a huge margin, but it passed. By my calculation, I may be off by a, 180 days takes us to around May 28th, just so you get a rough idea. I didn't, I'm not the official counter, so, but it's in that area. So, to my way of thinking, that's a few days, a few weeks short of our annual town meeting. I'm only saying this because, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to make recommendations or reach conclusions here, but it is within the time of when the school meeting is gonna be held, so if there's any proposals, which we'll be forthcoming with, and whether you agree with them or not is the question, that's an opportunity, I guess, I'm just mentioning that now. Our schedule, we're pretty much coming to the end of collecting information, was a phone call yesterday, I missed that, so I don't know the details of that, most of which you're getting by email, when we have a conference call that's sent out to you folks, after Jerry writes it up and sends it out. It's our hope that our next meeting will be on the 15th of December, 6 o'clock, that is a Friday, gonna go for a couple hours, we're gonna try to, I'm beginning to work now on reaching conclusions or findings, whatever, we're not sure what we're gonna call them, just probably a couple pages of bullet points to summarize all the stuff we've collected. Not gonna meet again until January 5th, that's also a Friday, if we are successful at reaching some conclusions or findings, and they may not be unanimous, but we're gonna try to reach consensus on them, we may take some input from the public at that point, that's a Friday night, probably for an hour. January 9th is a Tuesday, which will probably be a Selectmen's Meeting, we hope to present our findings, our conclusions, to the Selectmen at that point. Notice we haven't really committed to developing any kind of an ordinance, it's kind of an unknown at this point, so we may just show up with some conclusions, and then seek guidance from you as to whether you want us to go further, knowing that if there's gonna be any proposal before the voters, probably gonna need to be done in April, so there's some time there, unless you wanna schedule a special meeting. And then hopefully, this is just an idea, January 16th, also a Tuesday, a Selectmen's Meeting, maybe a public hearing, at 6 o'clock, on these findings, you know, we haven't, all we've been doing is meeting, we haven't heard much from the public at this point, not much of the public has showed up, couple people occasionally, but we haven't really opened this up for public comment yet, which we hope to do on, on the 5th, if we can come to that conclusion. So that's, I just wanted to update you at that point, that's what our thoughts are, look for any kind of response from you, as do you want us to go in a different direction or finish?
I think this sounds great, you know, we have been reading the information coming in through the emails, and it's a lot to put together.
There's a lot of detail, yeah, it's, and there's some conflicting stuff, I mean, to try to make sense out of all this, we're gonna try to do that in the next couple of weeks, kinda condense it, and again, it's gonna be controversial, there's, you know, there's, well, anyway, we'll see what we can come up with collectively, so.
The only thing that I would encourage you to change the public input from that Friday, January 5th, 6:00 PM, I don't know what kinda turnout, I mean, if you wanted to have public input, maybe even on the 9th at a Selectmen's Meeting, Friday night's gonna be tough to get public input at 6:00.
Yeah.
So maybe you could just have your regular meeting at 5, you know, on the 5th, but pick a different night of the week for public comment.
Okay, I don't know, yeah, I don't know how much progress we're gonna be able to make by the 5th.
And just remember, we have to post those on your behalf, so if it's gonna be public input, we need to be able to get it in the newspaper, website, so we need more than just a regular notice on it, so, try to get your committee to commit to some dates, and I'll get it scheduled.
Okay, that's why I'm giving you some dates now, so, is that enough time on the 5th?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that, on the 5th, I don't think you wanna have a public hearing, I mean, public input on a Friday night, you think you're gonna get a turnout?
I don't know, it's, the issue for the folks at the table that I'm sitting at, is all about 6 o'clock versus 5 o'clock, but you hear that pretty much every week, so.
Right, so why not on the 9th, which is a Tuesday night, have, after the Selectmen's Meeting?
Okay, the only problem with that is, that'll be the first public presentation, will be at the 9th, so people are gonna sit here and say, well, I didn't, I haven't had time to read it, and then this stuff.
Right, but it's not a public hearing for a drafted ordinance, so there's no, I mean, in all honesty, the Selectmen should probably hear it before the public anyways.
Yes.
And to present it all in one evening might save yourself some trouble.
Okay.
What's that, Brendan? I didn't, I didn't hear that comment.
You or what?
I thought you said something, I didn't hear you, you didn't say anything?
No.
Okay, my mistake.
So Friday at 6:00 PM, you'd like to have public comment at that time? 6:00 PM's a good time.
Yeah, I mean, that was our, realizing we haven't taken any comments from the public yet, so we didn't wanna be jumping ahead and not offering that opportunity. We also didn't wanna get ahead of showing, or sharing with you, we thought, we're working for you, so.
And the other thing to the board is, remember, this isn't, this isn't a committee that you've sworn in, I mean, this is a voluntary, so that's another reason I would encourage you to be there and do it on an evening that you're essentially in charge of the public comments.
Sure, we're not, you know, we're not fixed on any of this stuff, we're just trying to outline a schedule that might work here at this point, so.
Right.
So let's see what happens on, you know, how far we get on the 15th.
Okay.
We're gonna spend, hopefully, a couple hours, and see if we can reach consensus on, on how many, how much we can reach, so.
Okay.
Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire department?
What's up with the intimidation here? What was that all about?
We heard something.
Did you hear it?
Some voice, I did, I didn't hear, I didn't hear what he said, but we'd like to hear.
I mean, I think that very clearly from the, I heard what you said, so it's not a matter of intimidation, if I misunderstood you, I'm sorry, but I did hear you, so I wanted to give you a chance, if you felt like you needed to say something out loud.
There's meetings here all the time, you've got town officials and everything in the back of the room yelling and swearing.
Okay, and you're one of them, so can we just not have any comment from the public until it's public comment section? If you have something you wanna say, just bite your tongue until the public comment section, because the camera can hear, your friend next to you can hear, it's just not polite, that's all. So we'd like to hear from the department head, the fire department, please.
Good evening, everybody.
You just have to state your name for the people who don't know you.
Sure, I'm Steve Johnson, and I'm the fire chief here in Acton. So I got a couple issues to go over, that I just wanna go over with you guys tonight. One of the ones, I'll start off with the paramedic intercept fee that we're looking at implementing, copies of.
What we're doing with that for you?
Thank you.
So what this involves, for those of you that don't know, is, a lot of departments, when they have full-time paramedic staffing, they get called to other communities that don't, and what you do is, you respond, the paramedic will get in their ambulance, and they will provide paramedic-level care for that community, and assist them with, you know, it could be a critical patient, from the point where they get on scene, all the way to the hospital. And, for instance, Sanford, we used to, when we didn't have paramedics, we would call Sanford, who would provide that service, and so, of course, with every service you provide, there's a cost. And, out of fairness for our community, now that we have paramedics, we're looking at, coming January, we're gonna be at the paramedic level pretty close to about 100% of the time, which is a huge step for the community. So we get called for intercepts quite frequently, this year, we've been called 26 times for intercepts. So, out of fairness as well for our community, because every service we provide has a cost, we're gonna also implement an intercept fee. And the fee that we're looking to, to implement is $375 every time we get called for an intercept, and that meaning, we go, our paramedic gets into their ambulance, provides the treatment, and rides to the hospital with their ambulance, which takes that paramedic, you know, obviously away from us, temporarily, until they're done the call. So with that, has a cost, and because of that, because they go in their ambulance and we don't transport, that's not a call that we can bill for, we don't have any way to recover that money, except through assessing an intercept fee. So from now on, starting January 1st, we're looking at doing what Sanford did, and implementing an intercept fee, so that when they do call us for just the intercept, then we provide the paramedic, and we charge their community $375 every time, which is right in line with what Sanford does and other communities are doing. So, that being said, you know, if you do the math on that, times the 26 times, if we, if we'd implemented that already, you know, you're looking at almost $10,000 in revenue there, that we can put back to the community to offset our costs. So, that doesn't apply, for instance, if we get called to a community, because they've had, say, a car accident where they have multiple patients, or things like that, any call that we get called to in another community, that we actually transport the patient to the hospital, is a billable call, that means we can charge the insurance and whatnot, and recover that money. So if it's a situation like that, where their calling is purely just because, that would qualify as what's called mutual aid, which we also count on other communities, you know, as well, when we have second calls, or fires, or accidents, that, you know, overwhelm our resources. So, in the interest of keeping those good relations, we obviously wanna maintain that, and if we can transport, and it's a billable charge for us with our ambulance, then we won't charge an intercept fee, it's purely only when our medic helps them, rides in with them, and it's a call that we can't bill on, and just have a way of recovering some of the costs that we incur. So, and again, we're looking at implementing that come January 1st, all the other communities will be notified as well, and their departments.
The other communities are charging $375 as well?
Yeah, correct, yep.
Yeah, that sounds fine with me, it's a good idea.
It's not something we need to vote on?
It wouldn't hurt, where there's a financial number, and I don't know if he mentioned, but it was a good point that, when he and I was having a conversation today, is, he purposely made it the same as other towns, so that they wouldn't start playing, you know, picking certain towns, who's cheaper to come run, so that was, it was a good call.
Yeah, 'cause what we're worried, what we're worried about is if we charge less than, for instance, our communities, we would hate to see, say, using just Shapley, 'cause we're right next door, we would hate to see a patient, like in Shapley, on the Sanford Town Line, not call Sanford for the medic, because ours is cheaper.
Right.
And by doing that, we can still also be part of the system that makes sure that, if they do need a medic, the patient is gonna have the quickest access to a paramedic, versus waiting for a community that doesn't charge as much.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the paramedic intercept fees, as presented, to go into effect January 1, 2018.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
And Steve, just because it's an actual policy, and you've got until January 1st, I'll, if you can just send it to me, I'll.
Sure.
Put the section on the bottom for their signatures, so we can put a copy of the actual policy book, and it'll be official.
Sure, no problem.
We'll have him sign it next week, you'll be all set.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there, oh, you, yeah, you got one more.
Okay, so my next, my next course of business here, first of all, I just wanted to.
I just wanted to mention, when you're speaking to address the board, I know you wanna talk to the people out there, because it's good information, but you can just make it easy on you and us, just speak to the board.
Crick in the neck, sure, no problem. So, the second bit of business I have tonight is, first of all, as I was saying, I wanna thank everybody for all their support in helping us to get the new ambulance, we took our seat of it a couple weeks ago, and it's in service, and responding on calls, and what a huge difference. Just the way, the way it rides, the way it drives, the quietness, and so much more, for patient comfort, as well. So, thank you very much to all of you in the town of Acton for all your support, without you guys, obviously, it wouldn't have been possible, so. Better situation, better vehicle, and certainly providing a better service, so. That being said, we have some business of getting rid of the old ambulance. So, what I'm asking is that, we have, it's 2005 Ford Econoline 450 road rescue ambulance, it's got the 6.0 power stroke diesel, with 57,000 miles on it, I can, obviously, we'll get with you to give you all the final information, looking to entertain bids, as we have in the past, I believe, 30 days' request for bids, we're looking, in talking to the mechanic, and talking to the ambulance company where we bought our ambulance, that deals a lot with used ambulances, I think with that one, obviously, it was in a little bit of tougher shape, which is why it was such an urgent issue to, to stop using it, I think a minimum of $3,000 would be an acceptable bid, at this point, to ask for. So that's what I'm looking, looking to, to go for, and again, with a 30-day bid process.
I mean, Ed?
Yeah, I'm not up on what ambulance is cost, I'm gonna go on, if the company said it was worth probably three, it's probably, it's probably about right, I mean, we do know it has some issues, so, you know.
For example, the loaner, the loaner ambulance that we used, which was, even for our own mechanic, in much better shape than the one we just got rid of, per the company, is only worth about $5,000, and, and that one was in considerably better shape than the one we have, so.
Yep, yeah, they don't bring a lot of money.
No.
So.
Okay.
So you email me all the information, we'll go with a $3,000 minimum, and I'll get it advertised the next couple days.
Sure. And then, the next item we have, we have, I know there's been a lot of question if we have a boat, and we do have a boat, but it's, the problem with the boat is, it's just a small 12-foot aluminum fishing-type boat. It's a 12-foot boat, it's got a 9.9 horsepower Mercury motor on the back of it, for us, though, and for rescue, it's not something that we would even dare to try to use for a rescue, and for those types of persons, it's very unstable, the weight rating on it is only, it says three people, or 350 pounds, which, quite frankly, you put a couple firemen like me in there, and we're already over that, so let alone try to rescue or bring anybody else in the boat. So for us, the, the safety of using that boat just isn't a risk that I'm willing to, to accept, so I recommend that we also put that out for bid as well, to sell, and then, you know, get a little more money back in, and then hopefully, you know, come up with a different solution. But, at this point, it, it comes with, well, the outboard, plastic fuel tank, it can hold up to a 15 horsepower motor, if somebody so desired, but, and oars, things like that, and it also comes, it is on a trailer, and comes with a trailer. But, in looking at different boats of that age, and that size, and similarity, I think that it would be a fair price to ask, if we, if we requested the minimum bids of $1,000, complete, for the boat and trailer, with motor.
Oh, with the trailer?
Yep. And again, maybe a 30-day bid process.
How old is the boat?
Honestly, I don't know. I really don't know, I believe it was, it was from back with the Ambulance Association, and it was quite a few years, and a lot of the guys can't remember how old it is either, but they, I don't think they've ever actually really used it.
I've used it a couple of times, I brought the trailer up here, probably in 2000, 2003, something like that, it had an old trailer under it, prior to that, so, yeah, it's got a date back into the early 90s, if not, before that, I think somebody donated it, so.
Correct, yeah, I mean, it's definitely.
Maybe even the 80s, yeah, it's, it's an older boat, it's aluminum.
Yep.
Okay, we'll get together this week and work on those two?
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Three Rivers?
Carl Davis, just an update on the grant for Goat Hill, we did get the first reimbursement on that, and Jennifer and I will get together this week, and there'll be three submissions with that, the initial acquisition, then the transaction costs, and then the parking lot and trail, so, we'll get the second one in this week.
Okay.
I have another project that I wanted to tell the Selectmen about, this is a parcel up on the H Road, with the Pepin.
Can you carry, I'm sorry, can you carry that mic with you, if you're gonna stand over by the, I think it's, you can take it with you.
I can probably point it out from here. This parcel is 351 acres, that the Pepins own, up on the H Road, they have a working gravel pit, which is the white area on the map, the remaining acreage, a little over 300 acres, Three Rivers is in the process of purchasing, we recently got some funding from the MNRCP, which is a state funds, where people, if, if a contractor destroys wetlands, they pay into this fund to, so that you protect some wetlands somewhere else, we tried last year to get funding for this, and didn't get it this year, we did get funding. We still have some more money to raise on it, we don't have all the funds yet, but I think we, I think we'll manage to do it. One of the interesting parts of this is, the Pepins did get those two upper pieces that you can see in dark green around them, they did get them permitted this year, to take gravel out of there, 'cause they have resource protection all around them, and with this project, there will be no mining now, up next to the river, the only mining will be in the, in the white area there. The property would remain in tree growth, you know, tax, it's in tree growth tax rate now, and it would remain that way. The, the green part, I don't know about the, the gravel pit part, but.
Can you just point to, you're talking about Hebo-Hibo?
Nope.
Not Hebo-Hibo, the M.
H Road.
Oh, H Road.
H Road.
Oh, I was wondering, okay, it's on the wrong side of town, couldn't figure out where the pit was.
Yeah, this is, it includes Hanson Pond, I don't know if any people are familiar with Hanson Pond, which drains down into the Little Osiphe, and then goes into North Shapley Pond, and then the, the northern boundary is the Little Osiphe River. So it has considerable frontage on the Little Osiphe, and then Hanson Pond is a 30-acre pond, which has one little, you can't really call it a camp, it would have to be taken down, it's, it's kinda trashed at this point, and other than that, there's no, no development on it. It would have public access, you know, in the future, when Three Rivers does finish the project.
So this is basically disinformation for us?
Yeah, I just, I want, I don't want you to hear it somewhere else, or, I just thought it'd be good for you to know.
Sure.
What this project is about, we've been actually working with the Pepins for the last six years on this thing, so it's, it's, to finally get to the point where we're pretty close to working something out, you know, so. It does, it does give the, you know, it gives the townspeople some undeveloped waterfrontage, you know, it'll be open for hunting, and fishing, and traditional uses, as well as, you know, there'll be some trails on it, and things like that.
Where is the H Road on that map?
This little curve, that's that sharp curve.
Oh, okay, sure, and that's the entrance to the pit right there, okay, yeah, I know where you're talking now.
And then they would, they give us a little piece here, it would be a parking lot right there, you know, and trails would go from there.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, moving on to old business, 18, oh, 2018 to 2019 deadlines.
So two weeks ago, when you last met, we had a conversation about possibly pulling together the Warren and Finance, the Treasurer and myself, the Selectmen, and trying to work out a schedule that we thought better fit, better fit the needs of everybody involved. During your workshop last week, on that Tuesday, we spoke a little more about it, I was trying to get a timeline together, and the direction I heard from you was that, from Michelle and I, to put something together, and essentially, we would then invite Warren and Finance members that were concerned about the schedule to the next meeting, maybe next Tuesday, and see if it worked for them, but if you wanna just kinda go through this, I can tell you what we were thinking, and hopefully, the extra additional time will, will help Warren and Finance. So, starting backwards, town meeting is always the Saturday after the June election, so that day is pretty much fixed, June 16th, going backwards, posting the warrant, May 23rd, although it only has to be posted for seven days, with Memorial Day, and you always take a chance of something happening, you don't wanna, try not to post it too late. And then if we jump back at the top, so today is December 5th, we could send a memo anytime saying that the initial requests are due, this is all departments and social services, saying that your budgets for 1819 are due, we put February 2nd in as a timeframe for that, that would at this point, give the departments about three months to put their budgets together, which should be sufficient. We're looking at the following Friday, to all committees and departments that are considering putting some type of ordinance together, whether it's a marijuana ordinance, or I know there's some zoning, February the 9th, just as an FYI to the town administrator, that we're working on this ordinance, and we'll get it in by the deadline, and then bumping the ordinances up until March 2nd. So essentially, we just wanna know on the 9th if they're gonna have one, so we can leave room for it in the ordinance, and plan public hearings, which, again, those committees could be working on now, so. So if all of the budgets were in on February 2nd, and that gave us a chance to draft the, put the warrant articles together, put the books together for Warren and Finance, we thought it best to have the joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and Warren and Finance on Saturday, March 17th, because essentially, if you were gonna continue to meet with everybody, as you do, as you have in the past, that will give them, from March 17th, all the way to final recommendations due from the Warren and Finance to April 27th, so it's almost six weeks with the warrant. So, and during that six weeks, at the board's permission, or whatever you decide with the Warren and Finance, they can pull in whatever department heads they might have additional questions on, I don't know, I know that you haven't had a conversation with the Warren and Finance yet regarding the social service, and if the vetting is gonna take place, but there's a six-week period in there, so, we thought that would suffice. So after the 27th, that gives you a couple of weeks, for you to essentially make your recommendations, and sign it, and get it posted. So, with your okay on that draft, what I'll do is send it to Warren and Finance, and let them know that thoughts, questions, and concerns can be brought next week, and we can take those into consideration, and maybe consider making it final and mailing it out once we get their input. Are there any dates in there that you'd like to see changed, or you think need more time? I did attach the prior years, so that you could look at it, and you could see the difference. And I understood from the Selectmen, you're not intending to meet with social services unless they have a large jump, or they're a new organization, is that correct?
Right, I don't see, there's no need to be vetting any of the services we've already given to, if there's a new one that's coming in, I think we should, you know, put them through the same vetting process, but we don't need to vet the ones we've already looked at, and, but yeah, if there's a big jump, definitely we'll be looking to meet.
And once those initial requests come in, you can certainly better, you know, you've got plenty of time in there to make some scheduling, and possibly, if we decide to bring some social services in, and the Warren and Finance decides to as well, that we could do them in joint meetings, so that we're only bringing them in once. So I'll send this off to Warren and Finance, let them, give them a chance to look over it, make a list of questions, and Mr. Williams will put you on the agenda for next week, hopefully some input from your committee.
Thank you.
Okay, August meeting, follow-up from Brendan Meehan's question.
Yep, I just wanted to let him know that I did review the August 22nd and August 29th meeting, because they both do reference the meetings with an auditor, as they said last week, they both, that's exactly what they were talking about, I didn't hear any such comments that, that you said, but. hear any such comments that you said, but nevertheless, it was, it was around that exact topic. During the whole summer months after town meeting, they were discussing meeting with the auditor because of the concerns that Mr. Gore had. Eventually, his packet came before Warren and Finance, and the meeting just went away. That was never a meeting that they actually requested, being the auditors. So I did, but I did double-check the minutes and watched the videos.
Road ordinance with Cindy Hart and Dennis Long.
So, yeah, no, I was gonna say, go ahead, this is, so last week, so you've got two different, two different things here, and I think that one easier than the other, in regards to Dennis and the actual road ordinance. His question was, would you, would the Board of Selectmen consider proposed changes from the Road Committee in regards to the road ordinance? And now that we've put a timeline together, as an elected committee, I mean, I would think it's safe to assume that you would entertain it and look at it, so your committee can meet and, and talk about what proposed changes, you know, you think should be on there, and it'll be up to the board whether or not they move that forward. Certainly, they're gonna want the Road Commissioner's input as well. So I think that was a yes, right, as far as them moving along, if you think there's concerns, things that need to be changed. Cindy, a little harder, do you mind coming up?
I didn't know I was on the agenda.
Well, you spoke last about, you mentioned 13th Street and Covewood, and you said that the, it violates our policy, so.
Yeah, we need some help.
The Board of Selectmen, the Board reviewed the policy, and I've got a copy here for you in case you need it in front of you.
Oh, I pretty much know it.
Okay, so they're looking for specifics on how it violates it.
Yeah, how, can you?
Well, because you'd have to, for the town road ordinance, in order for it to be plowed, it would be a Class B road. Okay.
But that's not quite what it says.
Well, you're, you're plowing it, that was the purpose, that's why I was trying to explain it to you. So as a Class B road, if you read the requirements there, it is asking for public easements. The part of the road that you're currently plowing, there's one section where you don't have a public easement, and we have the letter.
Right, but the Board's not.
Saying we're not, well, may I finish, please? Okay, if we eliminate that part of the ordinance and change it, we can go by the state law, which Shapley did, which means if three-quarters of the people on the street have signed, then we're allowed to do it as a public easement. That does not take it on as a townway, it just gives us the ability to plow the road legally, without going into a lot of legalese with this one person that's reluctant. And there are 160-odd properties on that street, so it really isn't fair for one person to hold it up anyway. And unfortunately, that's the way, why we wanna get into the road ordinance, and try to fix it so that more roads can be helped. We have over 100 private roads, did you realize that? And there are more homes on these roads than on the town roads. And we need to start addressing them, there are some issues that cannot be taken care of by road committees, and that's why we have a town and town government, and this is where we need to step in and help. And the Road Committee is ready to get right behind you in any way we can.
So what I was gonna add was that the, this road ordinance, in which she refers to Class, the Class A, B, and C roads, this is if someone wanted to bring a road up to a particular par to get it adopted by town meeting, these are the steps they would have to do. When they plow that part of 13th Street, they're not plowing it to, to make it or call it a Class B road, they're plowing it to get to the town road in Covewood. I think they're unrelated, but, but that's not, not a conversation that you and I need to have, but this isn't about the plowing of it, this is about how to make them town roads and what class they're gonna be at. But nevertheless, I don't think it changes that they're willing to allow you to make some proposed changes and let the Road Commissioners and the Board look at it.
Okay.
Sound good?
Thank you.
New business, we have policies to look at?
Yes, I made you all binders with all of the policies that you currently have, thought maybe each week we could go over one. Some of them haven't been updated in a while, and you may or may not have changes to them. Based on the conversation that we had at the last meeting, and the conversation that you guys had with other staff, I was hoping to look at the personnel policy first. This was last changed not too long ago, actually. August 1st of 2007. The piece that you asked me to pull to review was regarding the snow closure, so you're on page three, section D, that talks about emergency closures.
Emergency closing, employees may be excused from work due to severe weather or other public-related emergencies at the discretion of the town administrator. Compensation for that absence will be considered as follows, and we're going to scratch the as follows, one and two.
You're going to?
That's the suggestion I'm making. Input, so the last sentence would read, compensation for that absence will be provided as long as the employees scheduled to regularly work that day, a regularly scheduled workday.
So compensation for that absence will be paid. You said assuming or earning, it's a regular workday, right? So you're saying that whether we close the town hall for a storm, or we send them home early, they'll be paid their regular shift, assuming they're, if they're scheduled to work.
And this pertains to the hourly employees, right?
Right.
Yes.
Probably oughta put something in there about the fire department being exempt from this. Last thing we want is for our paramedic to pack up and go home, seeing that's the person we're gonna need mostly, in that case.
Do you, do you have a policy at the fire station for closures?
We don't close.
They don't close?
We don't close, so.
Yeah.
I can put the words in there, though, if you want me to. Anything else in this policy you wanna discuss?
The holiday, hey?
The what?
I feel like there was a holiday issue.
Well, we, I think the concerns they brought to you were some of the holidays, but then we talked about the transfer station and the fire department, then having, you know, some of those holidays came from making sure all of our departments got a couple, so that, you know, in regards to time and a half, or, or whatever it may be, so closing or paying for the snow closure and not adding holidays kinda washed, you know, kept it more equal, so that the fire department is still getting those other holidays, should they have to work. I think that last change you guys made was for the bereavement, right? The bereavement was added.
Everything else in there, I think was up to date, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think everything was fine. Do you have a motion to accept the change that we just made?
I'll make a motion to accept the change.
Seconded.
All in favor?
So like the fire department policy, I'll make the changes, and we'll get it in your format and prepare it for signatures next week?
Okay. So next week will be the next policy in the book?
Yeah, or we could start from the front, I don't know if the.
Did we just do that one?
Well, yeah, we had just done that one in January, I think that's why I skipped it, so, yep, so use the town hall.
Okay. Onto job descriptions, we have the town clerk, tax collector, registrar, and town administrator.
So last week, you did leave Michelle and I both packets, I knew you actually said in the meeting that you wanted to look at the Treasurers first, she hasn't had a chance to put it all together, I did, so I thought, why wait?
Okay.
So these come from the, all the samples that you gave me, I essentially put them all into one document, there's a lot of information there, so I just thought I would give them to you and can review them for next week, and put them back on the agenda and see what changes you wanna add subtract. But it's a combination of all of the pages that you gave me.
Did I do that right?
I may have made four sets.
Or more. So one's town administrator, and then we have town clerk, tax collector. Did you get the town administrator? Yeah.
That's what you wanted, right?
Yeah, we, I got two extras. Two, three.
I could've given you the originals, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll review those.
I have just that.
Oh, town clerk.
You'll see, I mean, the town clerk, tax collector, registrar one doesn't flow real well yet, 'cause essentially, it took all of the statutes and copy and paste of them and just dump them into one document. I figured, once you decided what you wanted there and what you didn't want there, then you could put it in a cleaner format.
Okay.
But it's just all of the statutes and requirements for now.
No, public comment. Public comment, sorry.
William Williams. I just wanted to ask, again, just for my own understanding from the chief, Chief Johnson, in these instances in which we are going to give a interception fee, will that fee be given to the town whose ambulance is being staffed by our paramedic? Will it be, is there any instance in which it would be sent as a bill to the patient?
I think, if I can, based on the conversation we had today, the Tammy Higgins is gonna be doing all of the billing, it's gonna be like any other ambulance run, it'll go directly to them.
Just for clarification, the intercept fee gets billed to the town, just as when we called for Sanford, then we received the bill and paid for that, so.
That's what I had understood, I just wanted to get it clarified. So the patient would never receive a bill under those particular circumstances, then for the interception fee, thank you.
Dennis Long, I have two things, so if you have any questions, make sure you deduct that from my three minutes, because I don't want.
You're chewing up your time, Dennis.
I don't wanna spend two minutes answering, listening to questions, you know what I'm saying? First off, do the Selectmen have any idea how many commercial marijuana growhouses are in town at this point?
No commercial, we have medicinal.
Medicinal, but not commercial.
And I don't know how many medicinal.
What I mean by commercial is I don't mean 100,000 square foot building, I mean, places where, well, they're, they're growing it from medicinal, and some of them are pretty large. And the other thing, Buzzal Road. I was gonna drop it last time, and Jen said something, she was gonna talk to the Road Commissioners, and I was wondering if that had happened.
Is, are you done, I don't wanna interrupt your three minutes, are you good?
Well, we'll just stop it when you're talking, that's all.
Okay. I did speak to one of the Road Commissioners, and he believes and agrees with, with what Mr. Lenkowski is saying, I mean, it's, it's almost impossible without a survey, you know, as far as why they went down there and why they stopped, I mean, they're going by the direction of the Selectmen at that time. He did talk about the stake that had been put in by a pri, by a prior Road Committee member, everybody keeps referring to the old farmer's barn, but, you know, he can't say any more than anybody else where exactly that, that road is, but he had some different opinions on why they stopped when they did, and why they were told to pick back up, but at the end of the day, he doesn't think that, you know, none of it's relevant, if the attorney is saying at this point, without a survey, he can't tell you where it ends, he doesn't feel like his opinion is, you know what I mean, any more than that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. So the next question is, the people that lived on Buzzal Road or down past Buzzal Road, they have a road association, and they pay to have their road plowed. If in fact, like it's been for 100 years, what I say is true, it's illegal for them to plow that section of the road, it's against state law, it's very clear. So, liability purposes, and so what kind of position is the town putting them in by not maintaining that section anymore?
This comes back to whether or not you wanna ask the voters and act, and if they wanna have a survey done on that, because we've given our land attorney every piece of document that exists, as far as we know, and he can't make a determination, you know, where it legally stops without a survey.
The Road Committee went over that area, we were the ones that said stop at the end and not go down that last part, because it was, there were no good choices. If you went down to where the road actually ended at the dip, you had to go onto a private road and turn around in a private driveway to come back, or back the truck up, which seemed unreasonable. On that part of the road, there were no driveways, so no access to anything, and it was just a few hundred feet, we thought it was a better choice to just have one sin instead of two. So that's how we left it.
So then how, if I can ask Cindy, in your opinion, or in the Road Committee's opinion, does Buzzal Road continue down that 200 feet?
Yes.
As a townway?
Yeah, it does. We walked it with Dave Cody at one point with everything years ago, and then we've done it again, and it's right in that stupid dip, but.
Okay, thanks.
And remember, I mean, Lenkowski's not doubting any of that, he just, you know what I mean, you're asking him to prove it, and he can't, because there's nothing on paper that has.
Right, I mean, I've heard both ways, that it, we ended at the top, we ended at the bottom, so, okay. I guess it just depends on where we wanna stop plowing. It makes sense to what the Road Committee said, so, I'd have to go look at it, so.
If I may, if in fact, you're not gonna maintain that section of road, then I suggest that you move forward with a warrant article to discontinue that section of road, because if somebody gets hurt on that piece of road, and it's town road, the town's gonna be liable,
makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just gotta remember to put that on.
Yep.
Michael Cole, good evening. I was here this summer with some issues I had with the code, with the code enforcement officer and the property that was adjacent to mine, or actually, my girlfriend's. And so I did some research to see what the follow-up on that was, and I was very disappointed with what I found. First, in the, on July 18th, there was a meeting here in which talked about that, about planning, Mr. Walsh met with the Planning Board and the Director of Planning, and that they'd be interested in drafting an article for an ordinance. Well, I did some quick searching, and I found an ordinance that already covered this. So why people are spending time talking about things that have already been accomplished, I'm not really sure. And also in, in that it was talked about that no one has the authority to tell property owners what they can or cannot do with the property, well, isn't that the purview of the code enforcement officer? According to Article 6.1 of the same ordinance that was put out by the people here. According to Article 6.1 of the same ordinance that was put out by the people here, that very clearly states that the code enforcement officer is appointed to do that. So I'm not sure where the miscommunication is or the non-clarity. And then furthermore, it's, I also recently learned that the code enforcement has a boat that costs approximately 8,000. Now, this is a man that, in the words of the people here, does not have time to enforce property maintenance code. But it was also stated that the purpose of the boat was to find new non-compliance issues. So this man doesn't have time to take care of the issues that are already on his desk, but he has time to go in a boat that was arguably overpaid for and find new problems? Like, that doesn't pass the straight face test. Like, why are we paying this guy to do stuff that, to get more work when he can't do the stuff that he already has?
I'm going to have to maybe schedule another time to, I feel like there's another issue that with an employee, if you're, it sounds like you have an issue with employee that we shouldn't be having in public.
It's not that person, it's that position.
The position.
Yeah. I don't care, I don't even know who it's, Ken, right? So I don't have any problem with him as a person. I don't care who he is, but.
Well, we're working to get more help.
That position, like whoever that person is, if they can't keep up with the work they have, they shouldn't get an expensive $8,000 boat when the own fire and rescue doesn't have a boat that's adequate for your needs.
Okay, the time's up. I hear your issue, but we do have a deputy position out there. We have interviews next, is it next week?
We have two people we're going to interview, yes.
Two people. So we are trying to find help for the department. I don't, I think he just suddenly got swamped. I don't think he was swamped when he got the boat. I wasn't here at that time. But we are moving forward to find help in that department.
Okay, good.
And we did look into the ordinance and he did go out and follow, you know, vehicles, you know, people with unregistered vehicles and things like that.
Right. My point, my point there was that this ordinance predated when they were looking into it. So there was already an ordinance that dates all the way back to, I believe it's 1973. And as a paid elected official, I think that it would be a reasonable expectation that you're aware of what ordinances are already there. It just seems very wasteful to redo the same thing. And we're paying for that time, so I care about it. And I would just like to see maybe some better inter depart, or not really, inter-town communication so that everyone is always on the same page, so they're not doing things that have already been done in the past because.
I think that, I think the ordinance that you're talking about was there, but they were talking about doing a different.
A maintenance ordinance.
A maintenance ordinance, building something that we don't have that does control what people can.
Right. Originally, right, originally they were talking about back in the summer, they were talking about a maintenance ordinance that would, that might go as far as, you know, how high the grass could be or how many pieces of outdoor, indoor furniture could be in your outdoor land. Those are not covered in the current zoning. The zoning, you know, talks about how many cars and what a junkyard is, so they had talked about making it more of a maintenance, but they decided to, so they were different, but they decided that the current zoning had enough in it that would start enough of a project, just cleaning up what they had.
Fair enough.
They were different, but you've got good points. I mean, that's.
I mean, it was under the same address that had the graveyard, so I just made the assumption that it had to do with that, so. Thank you very much.
Greg Vermette. I would just like to say thank you. You just let something interesting go over three minutes. Thank you very much.
Well.
That was nice. That was nice.
We had to answer him.
Karen McManus. Now that this has been brought up, I'm wondering too about the maintenance zoning updates. They were old business and they had been put on regularly in the minutes. And I believe in your statement about business that old business would continue until things were resolved. And those posted minutes stopped around October 3rd. It was the last time I saw maintenance zoning as part of old business.
When the board of selectmen went back to his regular schedule, they instructed me to take it off the agenda because they felt like it was being handled.
So it won't be on the agenda all the time?
No.
So how would we know about updates?
Updates as far as each individual, each individual property that the complaints were made on?
Well, both. Some of the properties, if they are being cleaned up and that new letters from the attorney are going out to see if more are in compliance.
Yep. That, I mean, you're certainly, and you know based on our emails, you're going to be coming in to inspect the files. I mean, that's, the board doesn't with any department go through and ask for every, you know, for daily updates, and that's essentially what those are. I mean, it would be no different than, you know, having the fire chief come in and list each call that he goes on and an update. So, I mean, the board originally put that on there because they wanted to adjust his schedule so those complaints could be, were being handled. They feel like they're being handled. If there's specific questions about them, I mean, you're going to get them, but, I mean, I don't know that the board wants them brought out.
I thought the statement was that old business remained on the agenda until it was resolved, or this is, I know it's an ongoing.
Well, it was a collective piece of old business, not each individual property update.
I don't mean each individual one, but just that there'd be some, you know, some sort of an update on those.
No, I think would, at the time, like she said, it was to clear Ken's schedule so he could get a bulk of them done in his hands and manageable. And now that they are, we've taken it off. Because we, we believe they're, he's in control of them and can handle it.
So we've talked about the boat before too, and so will the fire department be able to use the town boat then, or is that?
That's a conversation right now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Carl Davis. Just wanted to update the upcoming meetings. There is a forestry conservation meeting on the 19th, and we're discussing long-range planning on the town forests. So if anybody from the public would like to have input on that, we'd certainly like to see people show up.
So the 19th?
19th at 7:00.
7:00.
Right here at the town hall.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Richard Nass. Dennis brought up the medical marijuana, and I just wanted to make sure, since this is televised, we have some short discussion about at least what we know or what I think we know about medical marijuana. First of all, there are a number of people growing marijuana in town. How many there are and where they are, I haven't got a clue. The reason is because once you get licensed to grow medical marijuana by the state of Maine, that information is not public information. So you cannot find out who is licensed to grow it or where they are. Now that's, when the governor talks about loopholes in the medical marijuana bill, that's probably one of them. But just for public understanding, as we move forward with this thing, there are people growing it, there are people that think they know who's growing it, and they may or may not be, but you cannot find out who they are.
Or where.
What's that?
Or where.
Or where. That's right. So just.
So we'll never know how many medicinal growers are enacted.
Not unless they change the law. Okay. Thank you.
William Williams. I would ask the board of selectmen look back on the original meeting in which people asked for an improvement in the agenda. And one of the statements that was made, as according to the last lady who was up here, was the fact that it would stay on the agenda until it was resolved. And even if the list is long, it gives people in the audience a chance to know that you're still working on it. We have no way now of knowing what's going on and that we get an agenda just like we always did just a few minutes before this meeting. But just having it there and knowing that it's still on there and that you're working on it should be something that I would hope you would agree to.
That's currently what we do.
Yeah, it is what we do. I mean, I think they just don't agree with the fact that you've taken the complaint forms off. I mean, that's, there's a difference between those two statements. We're still putting anything old, like the follow-ups from the road ordinance or the questions Mr. Meehan had about the August meetings, it's all still staying on there. It's just the board also has the right to take something off if they feel like it's completed.
True. I'm moving on to announcements. Town hall and library is closed on Tuesday, December 26th. The transfer station is closed on Monday, December 25th and Monday, January 1st. Dog licenses expire December 31st.
And I have one.
And Jennifer has another announcement.
So I know you guys are probably tired of hearing about my neighbors helping neighbors, but we're doing so well in it. So what we decided to do, this is part of a display that's out there, this is all I could bring in. But we have some kids in town that we are adopting based on situations going on in their lives. And remember, just like our food baskets, this isn't something they can apply for. These are people that we've chosen based on what we know was going on in their current situation. So we have placed four items per child, and two were clothing and two are toys, fun items of some sort. I was really surprised in looking at this list and looking at the things, how many of these kids, even those little kids, what they asked for when it came to clothes and bedding. That was the biggest thing. Some of them didn't even put toys on their list. But nevertheless, so what you'll find in our little display out there is something that might say toddler boy 6T winter coat. They're all numbered, so you can take whatever one you'd like. There's a place to leave your name and phone number and tell me what number you took and bring it back to us before. I think we're going to go with the 19th so we can get them delivered. But this essentially is six different families that have kids involved. So if anybody's interested in coming in, taking a little gift, we put that together and it would be helpful. And certainly at the end, we will use our neighbors helping neighbors funds to fill in the spots or pick up anything that didn't get chosen.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, we have the planning board on December 7th. There's no time.
7 o'clock.
Assuming 7.
At all, yeah, same time. I thought you would know by now, so I left the clock for you.
December 12th, the board of selectmen at 5:00. December 19th, board of selectmen and the forestry committee will follow at 7:00.
I don't have any other meetings, guessing the road committee. No one else is meeting in December. Cemetery, I know, isn't meeting. No one else has reached out, so it should be a fairly short month.
The marijuana committee on the 15th.
Yep, we just got that tonight.
Road committee's on a break?
I think we'll wait till the first.
Okay. Sounds good.
Make a motion, adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?